Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of Forsyth County Board of Commissioners on October 9th, 2025. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, you actually can do so by calling 336-422-1200. That number again is 336-422-1200. And you'll be placed on hold until the public session begins. And members of the audience who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, you can fill out a speaker card and return it to our clerk at the end of the deus, and you can actually do that anytime now. You could do it now. We also have a public hearing today. You do not have to sign up to participate in the public hearing portion, and it will be coming up shortly. Commissioner Wizard Hunt will participate in the meeting remotely today. She's traveling to a County Commissioner Association meeting. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Linville. I'd like to ask you to stand if you are able.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
First item on the agenda today is a public hearing to consider the submission of an application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce, the Rural Economic Development Division, to apply for and accept if awarded a rural building reuse grant to support the location of W.H. Farms Company in Forsyth County. And Helena Foray-Viore, our Community and Economic Development Program Administrator, is going to give you a brief overview, and then we will begin. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. It's good to be with you here today. I am here to present on behalf of Project Flower, as we have heard up until this point. And this agenda item is for consideration of our support in the building reuse grant, which we would serve as the local government unit to administer the grant and apply on behalf of the company. I'll share that the founder and CEO of this company is here today. I know they are grateful for your consideration, and there are some other members in the audience that are also here on behalf of the company. So this company is a company that specializes in botanical production and manufacturing to create wellness and cosmetic products. They're looking to establish a headquarters here in Forsyth County, and the building that they have in mind is currently vacant, and it's a good space that they could use for both offices and their production lines. The company is looking at a capital investment of $3 million to acquire and renovate this facility. This amount is all based, this investment would bring roughly 120,000 new dollars in tax revenue over the course of 10 years. Of course, this estimate is based on our current tax rate and that $3 million investment. This new investment should bring 41 new jobs to the community. The roles in these jobs will vary, and the company's average annual wage will be higher than what the North Carolina Department of Commerce defines the current average wage in the county. So the current average wage in Forsyth County is $65,319 a year. This new company will bring a private sector wage of roughly $79,000 per year. And the company is in consideration for a building reuse grant. This resolution is to pass that building reuse grant approval. Any questions at this time?
Questions for Helena.
Okay.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition?
Good afternoon, Chairman Martin, members of the board.
Good afternoon, Ellen. I see.
Good to see you. Ellis Kiefer, 525 Vine Street. Great Winston Salem, Inc. is excited to support W.H. Farms as a candidate for the building reuse program. This project represents the next phase of growth for a company that has been deeply engaged in our local entrepreneurial ecosystem, including participating in both Winston Starts and the Center for Creative Economy. It's exciting to see a locally grown startup graduate into the manufacturing phase, bringing with it a capital investment of, as Helena said, $3 million in the creation of 41 quality jobs. Supporting this expansion with building reuse not only enables a local entrepreneur to scale and place, but it also strengthens our region's position as a destination for growth-stage startups. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Just give us your name and address, please.
Catherine Ross. I'm living in temporary housing at 931 West Beth Street. I am the incoming president of Winston Starts, and we're talking about the building reuse possibility. However, I'd also like to speak about the economic vitality of this region and what this reuse will allow us to do. We have a female entrepreneur who's looking to be scaling for a company that has international impact and can continue to grow in our community, to hire more and more jobs in time. The commitment of her as a founder and to be scaling this company, she's proven it over and over in time. And on behalf of Winston Starts, we would like to formally support this initiative.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Roberts Bass, living in Ardmore on Elizabeth Avenue, and I'm here representing the Center for Creative Economy, which you just heard reference, that Nicole went through our program a few years ago. Nicole came to the Center for Creative Economy, the Velocity Program there, for help with rebuilding her brand and her value proposition for her business. She won a $10,000 grant from the organization and entered Winston Starts immediately thereafter, where she has continued to build her business and began to seek funding for this move to Winston Salem. W.H. Farms has now won numerous awards and grants, has a large pipeline of sales, both domestically and internationally, already on their books, and more to come. Nicole gives back to the entrepreneurial community in Winston Salem already as a mentor through the Winston Starts Program and through the Center for Creative Economy's program. We could not ask for a finer and more dedicated entrepreneur to bring a new business to Winston Salem. So she'll be bringing 40 jobs, increased tax revenues, and provide occupancy on a currently vacated building that's underutilized. So this is a win-win for Forsyth County, and we ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Give your name, address, please.
Name is Allen Daniel. My address is 100 Fernworth Court in Clemmons, North Carolina. I speak not in opposition to this particular project so much as I speak in opposition to the process, and I will explain why. The number that you all always use to determine wages is the average wage. I'm going to tell you exactly why that's a problem. Did a little quick math. The average wage on this project is $78,000. That can be accomplished with 41 employees by paying 40 of those employees $40,000 a year, and one of those employees $1.6 million a year. That is not what we're looking for in economic development in Forsyth County. The more appropriate number to use would be the median income. How many people make more than that number? How many people make less than that number? The median income, in my example, would be $40,000. That's not very impressive. So I hope you all have more information than we do about what the range of the income would be, but for future projects, I strongly urge you to change the number you use from average wage to median wage to give the citizens of Forsyth County a better idea of the actual economic value of the company being approved. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Chairman.
Yes?
I wondered if the owner's here, if she could come up and just answer a question for me, one question.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and answer any questions.
I just wanted to confirm from you that all of your products are FDA compliant and in accord with 21 CFR. Is that correct?
Correct.
You never had a 201 or anything?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have a question, I guess in regards to Mr. Daniels.
Comment?
Yeah, comment.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So first of all, to answer that question, both Department of Commerce and the county has the exact wages of all of the 41 positions that are being offered, and so those 41 positions actually do range in wage value, beginning at, I would think, there's nothing that we are offering that's 40,000, so I can just start there, but we do have executive C-suite as well as some scientists that will be hired that causes, if you will, the average to increase, but it's certainly a solid number for a number of the positions, and it does speak to the economic impact that we're bringing to the county. Okay. Thank you.
That's good. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel and a second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any further discussion?
I would just, for the record, like to make sure that, obviously, as we move forward, that citizens that are concerned reasonably like Mr. Daniels, that we do have the number of employees and what their salaries would be based on this project, so that the citizens can see that, you know, it is economic mobility for the average citizen here in Forsyth County.
I would just agree that the suggestion that we utilize median as an information factor has merit to it. It could supplement the mean. The mean would give you an idea of what the overall economic impact of the salaries would be, and the median could give you information on what the average employee is actually getting.
Need further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and congratulations, and maybe all the other folks who are here would you stand up. would you stand up.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if Commissioner Whisenutt, is she available to vote?
I'm sorry. Commissioner Whisenutt, can you hear us?
Commissioner Whisenutt is unable to join at the moment. We're trying to make connection with her.
Okay. Good, all righty. The next item on the agenda is a, so, yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution commending FTCF Forsyth Tech Community College on the occasion of its 65th anniversary. Dr. Janet Spriggs and her, some of her staff are here to receive the resolution. I'd like to ask Commissioner McDaniel if she would read it, and then you can join them, perhaps a picture at the end. You could bring your staff to come up and...
I'll read it and come down.
That's great.
Awesome.
In fact, yeah, you could. If you're more comfortable turning the other way, that's okay too. I mean, either way, that's...
However you want. I'm coming. Yes, okay. It brings me joy to read the resolution commending the Forsyth Tech Community College on the occasion of its 65th anniversary. And as a trustee on the board of Forsyth Technical Community College and one of the sponsors during our Sapphire Gala, on behalf of the Forsyth County Government, I'll read the resolution. Whereas Forsyth Technical Community College was founded in 1960 as the Winston Salem Forsyth County Interschul Education Center and has provided accessible higher education opportunities for more than six decades to students of Forsyth and Stokes County. And whereas Forsyth Technical Community College is one of the largest providers of undergraduate education in the state of North Carolina community college systems. Whereas Forsyth Technical Community College offers associate degrees, diplomas, and certificates across nine campuses, they have nine campuses locations, providing access to high-quality and affordable educational opportunities. And whereas Forsyth Technical Community College offers numerous clubs and organizations that enhance student engagement and enrichment in areas such as community service, academics, diversity, arts, journalism, and special interests. And whereas Forsyth Technical Community College has recognized the leader in workforce development, providing vital training that prepares students in-demand jobs and supports the growth of the local and regional economy. Whereas graduates of Forsyth Technical Community College enter the skills labor force prepared to contribute to the prosperity of Forsyth County, Stokes County, and the state of North Carolina. And whereas Forsyth Technical Community College partners with local school districts to offer dual enrollment, I love that dual enrollment program, in early college programs, enabling high school students to earn college credit, explore career pathways, and reduce the cost of higher education. Whereas over the last 65 years, Forsyth Technical Community College has educated and empowered thousands of students who have gone to, gone on to strengthen the workforce, enhance the communities, and improve the quality of life across the region. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners honors and commends the Forsyth Technical Community College on the celebration of your 65th anniversary and expresses sincere appreciation for its continued commitment to excellence in education, workforce development, and community service adopted this ninth day of October 2025. Providing I get a second.
Seconded that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Would you go down and take a picture?
Absolutely.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and recognizing the efforts of Bridges to Hope Family Justice Center. Dwayne Hamlin, Family Justice Center Director, is here to receive the resolution, and if you brought some folks with you, welcome for you to please come forward. And Commissioner Bessie is going to read it. You can go there or do it here.
The workforce resolution is before that one. But I guess you can just go.
Just go ahead.
Yes, we'll get that.
What did she do? He just keep getting up.
I apologize.
That's all right.
Wow, that's a big group.
This is actually technically listed as agenda item number four, but we're taking it a bit out of order because I'm not going to argue with all these good folks.
Yeah.
This is the resolution recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and recognizing the efforts of Bridges to Hope Family Justice Center of Forsyth County. Whereas, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and domestic violence affects all people regardless of age, sex, gender, race, ethnicity, ability, religion, and socioeconomic background in Forsyth County communities. Whereas children who witness or are victims of emotional, physical, or sexual abuse are at higher risk for physical and mental health challenges as adults. Whereas, the North Carolina Coalition Against Domestic Violence identified 94 domestic violence-related homicides statewide in 2024, with victims ranging in age from seven months to 85 years, including 22 murder-suicides. Whereas, from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025, the Winston Salem Police Department experienced 3,637 domestic violence reports. The Forsyth County Sheriff's Office experienced 2,175 domestic violence reports. And the Forsyth County District Attorney's Office disposed of 2,103 domestic violence cases. Whereas Bridges to Hope Family Justice Center of Forsyth County serves individuals and families who are victims of domestic violence at no cost and provides wraparound services for safety planning, danger assessment, emergency financial resources, safe shelter, legal representation, advocacy, counseling and crisis support, civil and criminal justice proceedings, investigations, and other basic needs in one trauma-responsive location. And whereas Bridges to Hope provides these services both directly and through partnership with the following partner agencies: Children's Law Center of Central North Carolina, Experiment and Self-Reliance, Family Services, Inc., the Office of the Forsyth County Clerk of Court, Forsyth County District Attorney's Office, Forsyth County Judiciary, Forsyth County Magistrate's Office, Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, Kearnsville Police Department, Legal Aid of North Carolina, Next Step Ministries, North Carolina Department of Adult Correction, The Parenting Path, Winston Salem Police Department, and the Forsyth County Health and Human Services Departments, including Behavioral Health Services, Community and Economic Development, Public Health, Social Services, and other community organizations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners recognizes October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and recognizes Bridges to Hope Family Justice Center for its role in addressing domestic violence and creating a safe haven for survivors of safety, hope, healing, and strength. Adopted this ninth day of October 2025, I so move.
Seconded that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to all of you, and I'd like to ask you to turn around and see if we can get a picture that, in that direction.
This is how leadership come on around the podium. Come to this side and face out. Please go ahead and move that. And as I said, leadership, we have to stay in place.
Commissioner Bessie. Yes. It's okay, we did it.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Big smiles.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you so much. That's why we got to get this working on.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bessie, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, County Managers Office, and other elected officials. To the county staff at Bridges to Hope Family Justice Center, thank you for your leadership every day, helping to connect clients to our partner agencies onsite and offsite. And to our partner agencies, you really showed up and showed out today. Teamwork makes the dream work. You are amazing. The good news is it's October, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and by the many partner agencies, survivors, family, and friends of survivors in the room, and to those who couldn't be present, this is an important issue that many people care about. Being real, what we really need is for our community to care about what's happening to survivors during the other 364 days and 11 months of the year. With over 6,000 combined domestic violence reports from three law enforcement agencies locally and five combined locally DV-related homicides reported through September, we still have work to do. There are lives that can be saved and enriched because of the work we do together. Our partner agencies are poised to make a system-level shift to change the narrative that doesn't require survivors taking an overwhelming number of steps and actions just to stay alive. Our role as a center is to make it easier and efficient, not more complicated, to be safer. That is why a family justice center exists in a community. There have been some wins this year, and some more wins are on the horizon, thanks to all my colleagues here today. We've implemented SEJIN, the Pre-Trial Release Electronic Monitoring Program ordered by judges that offers exclusion zones for the abuser and real-time response to victims involved in criminal cases, thanks to those who made this possible. We've extended filing times beyond just three hours a day at Bridges to Hope so that more clients can complete the process for an emergency protective order. Thank you to those who made this happen. The Winston Salem Police Department has implemented the lethality assessment protocol, which allows officers to respond to clients on scene and assess their potential for serious injury and/or potential homicide and get them immediately connected to victim services. We also added experiment and self-reliance to our roster of onsite services for clients who desire coaching for building their budget, savings, educational, and homeowner options after the crisis. And also to Department of Social Services, they are providing monthly onsite educational information to domestic violence shelter residents. What I have to say as I wrap up is stay tuned. We are proving every day that we are stronger together and we can do more together. Thank you Forsyth County.
And I would note that we already had the Day of Unity Monday of this week. A number of folks who are here today were present for that. And there will be an additional community vigil on Thursday, October 23 at 5:45 PM in the Forsyth County Government Center Courtyard out front.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing October 2025 as Workforce Development Month. And Andrea Sheets, our Workforce and Economic Development Administrator, is here to receive the resolution. I'd like to ask you to come forward, and I think Commissioner Woodbury is going to read the resolution. And for others to join her, please come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to read the resolution recognizing October 2025 as Workforce Development Month in Forsyth County, North Carolina. Whereas Forsyth County and Greater Winston Salem, Inc. have led the organization in coordination of the county's workforce development, including Forsyth Technical Community College, Winston Salem Forsyth County Schools, and Goodwill Industries of Northwest North Carolina, and created Forsyth Works utilizing county ARPA funds. Whereas Forsyth Works, the unified hub for workforce development in Forsyth County, offers events and resources year-round for employers and job seekers to grow employment and expand economic opportunities. And whereas Forsyth Works and partner organizations are concentrating on a range of events for students, job seekers, and employers during October, including the annual World of Work Career Exploration Event and Community Career Fair, job skills training classes at various county libraries, the second Forsyth Works Employer of Choice Certification Cohort, employer tabling and hiring events, and the second annual Women of Manufacturing Conference. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes October as Forsyth County Workforce Development Month and encourages all residents, community organizations, and employers to participate in workforce development initiatives to continue strengthening our local economy and promoting equitable economic growth and opportunity. Adopted this ninth day of October 2025. Thank you.
We'd like to get a picture of you guys too, if you just...
Oh, yeah.
Seconded that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good. Congratulations to all of you, and just around, there we go.
Thank you Commissioners for your continued support, and thank you to our partners for being here today. You may recall that last year we celebrated Workforce Development Week, but this year we are celebrating Workforce Development Month. That is a testament to the growth of our community partnerships and the Forsyth Works Initiative. Programs this month include Workforce Wednesday Employer Tabling at Forsyth Tech, job-ready skill sessions at our public libraries, the third annual World of Work Career Exploration Event, and this year, Community Career Fair. You have all received an invitation to this year's event, and I hope to have the pleasure of hosting you as we have in years past. Later this month is the Employer of Choice Credential, where employers will learn how to adopt practice and policies around topics like managing multiple generations, second chance hiring, and modern employee benefits to become a stronger employer for our community. And lastly, on the 30th is the Women of Manufacturing Conference at Forsyth Tech, where we will host an underrepresented group of one of Forsyth County's largest industry sectors with a focus on talent recruitment and retention to help connect our residents with jobs and empower our businesses to grow. It's a busy month, but it's only possible through strong partnerships. I would be remiss to not, if I did not take this opportunity to acknowledge, this work continues the other 11 months out of the year and is helped by countless case managers, school career counselors, grant admissions and accountants, and thousands of other individuals in this community who care deeply about helping our residents succeed. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the meeting of September 25, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls or cards for the public session?
Mr. Chair, we have two callers and 11 speaker cards.
Maybe we could do the callers first?
You are now available.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. Okay. My apologies.
You are now available.
Let's try this again. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. Please state your name... Please state your name and address for the record.
Anita Moody, 4604 Beacon Park Lane, Waukertown, North Carolina.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. You may begin.
Speaking for the Forsyth County Commissioners Resolution Authorizing Conditional Forgiveness of WS FCS Year 2025 Debt to Forsyth County, with proviso that, number one, the resolution applies to all debt encumbered by WS FCS, including to Forsyth County, and, number two, the Forsyth County Commissioners shall work with the Forsyth District Attorney's Office and hold those accountable who created the debt to the full enforcement and extent of the law, and, three, the Forsyth County Commissioners shall insist on credible reforms in the management of all public funds and transparency to taxpayers and respect, and be thankful to individual taxpayers for involuntarily and prompt payments of property and personal taxes. That concludes my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session. Please state your name and address for the record.
Richard MacCree, 8917, Setonville, 25. Clemmons, North Carolina.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. You may begin.
I just wanted to say that the public needs to know a little bit more about the disappearance of all the money from the school system. It doesn't seem the accountability is there, and it doesn't seem like we have anything in place to prevent it again. And we need to have some accountability before we start throwing too many after bed. I would both know on this till we learn a lot more about what happened and what is put in place to prevent it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have 11 speaker cards, and our first speaker is Michael Owens. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Michael Owens, 4250 Salem Landing Drive, Winston-Salem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Mr. Chair, if I may begin, I'd like to ask a question before I begin my statement, and that is, in regards to loans issued by the county, are there outstanding loans that are owed to the county other than the Forsyth County school system?
Typically don't answer, but I'll simply say there are no loans.
There are no other loans, no...
No loans. But there's a debt, and it was basically from the previous year, basically the school district owed us back $5 million for items we had paid on their behalf.
Very good.
So that's a, it's a debt.
So there are, there is debt owed to the county. Like, I guess, I'm curious as to why, because the county also is owed money by others. The county has a first-time home buyers program. The county, on occasion, will provide money to small businesses in the area. We just saw something a short time ago where money was provided to a private organization. I'm curious why this particular debt, this $5 million owed by the school system, is being considered for forgiveness when all of the other loans, all of the other debts owed to the county are not up for debate? I think that's a question that you should ask yourselves, and I think we know the answer to that. That was more or less a rhetorical question. The answer is because this particular issue gets attention. This particular issue routinely has this room full of people asking you to forgive the debt. This particular issue routinely makes the evening news and has each of your names in our local newspapers, whereas those other much smaller debts do not. There are a lot of people in this county who are asking you to forgive the loan, but there are just as many, if not more, who just want their money back. And I'm hoping you'll consider those people as well.
Our next speaker is Allen Daniel. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon again, Allen Daniel, 100 Fernworth Court in Clemmons, North Carolina. Unfortunately, one of the recent hallmarks of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools has been an absence of accountability. The only way to restore and establish accountability is to start with the truth. So I would like to correct a few misstatements that have been widespread and then offer some other commentary. The most prevalent misstatement is that the original debt was $46 million, and the amount owed is $37 million. That is incorrect. At the 8/12, August 12, School Board Meeting, Ms. Moore quietly admitted that the actual total of the debt was between $60 and $65 million, the exact number unknown. So if we have paid down, and I use the word "we" when I speak of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, I do not work for them, I have a child in them, but that's how closely I feel toward this. If the district has paid down $9 million, then that means the outstanding debt is not $37 million, but $56 million. The second misstatement is that if you all forgive that debt, it will not cost the taxpayers any additional money. That cannot be true, just like it cannot be true that the $8.5 million that you gave the county schools on August the 14th does not cost the taxpayers any more money. The only way the county has of generating revenue is to tax its citizens. If you spend $8 million on the schools and you forgive $5 million, that's $13.5 million that can't be spent on anything else unless you raise enough taxes to replace that $13.5 million. The other misstatement is that procedures and practices are in place to keep this from happening again. That is untrue, and I can prove it. On August 14th, this body gave Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools $8.5 million to pay down the debt toward, to North Carolina. We have heard repeatedly that the problem, some of the problems with the finances were the old AS400 and its antiquated software, and that under the new system, those same mistakes couldn't happen again, that it was impossible to spend money that wasn't in the budget. The budget amendment appropriating that $8.5 million to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools passed at their September 23 meeting, one month and nine days after you gave them the money, and about one month after they wrote the check to North Carolina to pay that money.
Mr. Daniels, we're past three minutes. See if you can wrap that up.
So I encourage you all to not forgive the debt, but to hold the district accountable. The one thing, the final thing I'll say is that there can't be, the erroneous statement is that the only way to pay back that money is to take away money from supplies. There's two groups of people who have not been touched, principals and the school board. There is a way to lower expenses without any more impact on students and teachers. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Terry Marazak. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Terry Marazak. I live at 6547 Kernersville Road in Blues Creek, North Carolina. Chairman and fellow commissioners, I respectfully urge you to reconsider the proposal to the grant of forgiveness to Forsyth County schools. As a member of this community, I believe it is essential to address this issue directly in granting loans forgiveness to the school board. Commissioners dealing with this tax loan forgiveness raises concerns about accountability and equity, and it is misuse of public funds, and it is our responsibility as public officials to set an example to fiscal responsibility and integrity. Furthermore, this decision may create a perception of favoritism, favoritism between the school board and our county commissioners, which is a direct link. Undermining the trust of our citizens have in our commissioners and the ability to manage our community resources effectively, I urge you to prioritize transparency, accountability, and fairness in our decision-making. I request that you consider the impact of this loan forgiveness on our county's finances, and it may set for future decisions. So in other words, you forgive this, you've got many other people that have loans out in our county that you owe it to them to forgive them to as well, and the taxpayers can't keep, can't keep absorbing all that. So I thank you for your attention in that matter. But one other matter that I would like to address is kindly suggest that we should consider opening all our meetings in prayer. While I deeply respect the tradition of honoring our military members who have made it an ultimate sacrifice, I believe that prayer could bring even more value to our communities of Forsyth County. A prayer has the power to unite us, provide comfort, and seek guidance for wise decisions. So I'm asking us, we're a country under God, trust in Him to guide us through all this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Valerie Brokenborough. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Chair Martin, members of the board and county manager. My name is Valerie Brokenborough. I live at 455 Carolina Circle. On Tuesday, I had the opportunity to hear North Carolina Superintendent Mo Green speak at an event at Knollwood Baptist Church. Superintendent Green called on everyone in attendance to be champions of public education. I'm here today to ask you to do just that, to vote yes on the resolution to forgive $5 million that our school district owes the county, and to show Forsyth County residents that you too are champions of public education, even when some may urge you not to help our schools. Why vote yes today? Like many Forsyth County residents, I am angry and deeply disappointed with the school district. They let us down, and our community is hurting. But staying angry and assigning blame won't fix the problem and help us move forward. Let me use a metaphor. Imagine one of our buildings is on fire. The fire started through negligence, not your fault at all, but it's still burning, and if not fully contained, it could spread. Would you stand on the sidelines and say, "It's not my responsibility"? I hope not. The community is coming together to figure out how to extinguish this fire and start rebuilding. The district owes $18.3 million, $10 million to contractors, $3.4 to the state, and $5 million to the county. The only money they have flexibility with is the $176 million allocated by the county. To repay the debt, they'll need to make cuts, and that could be more layoffs and fewer resources for our students. More cuts will be devastating not only for our schools, but for the entire community. That's why I'm asking you to vote yes on the resolution today. Be the champions of public education that Superintendent Mo Green called for. Work with the school board and our state representatives to ensure our schools have what they need to succeed and prepare students to thrive. Our leaders, as leaders of our community, please set the example for others to help as well. If someone emails you saying, "Don't bail out our schools," please tell them this, even though I understand their frustration, helping our school is the right thing to do for our students, our educators, and our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joanne Allen. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Joanne Allen, Peel Box 284, 27102, President of Action For Now, Inc. I had a list prepared for you all, but I'm back, and it's time. Before I actually go into my question or what I need to say to you all, because the majority of you all do know who I am and what I stand for, and that is accountability, that is honesty, that is integrity, these are the things that I stand for. Every last one of you all were placed in office, you were voted in office, and of course, you know I'm going to say what I always say, quite a few of you need to step down. Quite a few of you need to step down. You've been here too long. You have stifled Winston-Salem Forsyth County. Yes. And let me just share this. In order to make a city, a county, great, you all have to be great. That means you all have to come with more things, better options than what you do. You all have been sitting back, and I'm not talking to everyone up here, I'm talking to the main ones, I don't know you, I'm sorry, but you, you, and you, it's time for you all to go. It was time for you all to go years ago. You all have done nothing for Forsyth County other than sit back and let people like Dun Flo, what's the other one's name? Hold on, because I tell you, it's just, it's awful, it really is. Dun Flo, Bob Leek, you all know who he is. We have given millions of our tax dollars to these individuals, along with Ralph Wambel and Joe Budd. And I know you all know who Joe Budd is. He's the one that took over the contract for the school system as far as hiring part-time people, whereas we took away full-time people. My point is this, enough is enough, and we're here. And trust me, we speak for those individuals who can't get off of work and come here to confront you all the way that we should. But you all have shown this city, this county, you all are only about yourself, and don't think that we don't know who you are and what you all have done. Understand that. It's time for you all to sit down, it's time for you all to put the people Winston-Salem Forsyth County first. My name is Joanne Allen, I'm President of Action For Now, and trust me, when I say we're back, we're back to make you do your job. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Contessa Smith. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Contessa Smith, 3712, Foxton Drive, Winston-Salem, 27105. Good afternoon, Contessa Smith, 3712 Foxton Drive, Winston-Salem, 27105, Olive in the Northeast Ward. Last year, I came in here to do something that I really don't like to ask, and that's for someone to help me accomplish or get a resolution for Mr. Don Martin. I asked you for an investigation into the claims and matters that I brought before you most humbly and respectfully for help, not to cause confusion and all the other rumors and slanders that are going about me, but for actual help. And you didn't come through, you promised me that. You said that you would investigate, and you would get back to me, and you would give me those results. I believed in you, Mr. Martin, I counted on you, and I hate that you failed me for that. And so I just wanted to put it on the record, this is a repeated behavior. You cannot hide yourself from the community because you're over the county, you see? And so when we live in this county and we bring something to you, I feel like you're just obligated. I don't like to get angry and upset and show another side that a lot of people have, they just think they're too good to actually show it to the public. I'm human. But what happened ain't right, and it's still happening. But until you investigate and find out, we still have to petition to the federal government and other outside agencies, when we have people like you here that was elected. I actually did vote for you, I really did, because I thought that your age and your wisdom, not calling you old respectfully, but you've been around long enough, I said, "This is the guy that can help me." Because my black community, they won't help me. The NAACP, they won't help me. The people that are supposed to, mission in this community, they will not step up for what is right. And so I'm back again, Mr. Martin, to see if we can get that investigation done, because I don't like power struggles, but I do like to be treated fairly. I do like to, and that's what it seems like it's engulfing too, is a power struggle. People have me totally misconstrued, where I'm the one that I feel that was very violated in spite of what people may think. I'm asking you to investigate that so you can find out what's really there. And I just don't feel that you held up your promise, because you said it right here in front of everybody. And it's hurtful that you wasn't able to do that, because it's escalating and snowballing, and it's turning into something that's gonna be on the record, because I ain't letting it go. What happened was wrong, and only you can find the wrongness. I can't go down there and hang around and try to be something that I'm not. I'm not an attorney, I'm not an investigator, I don't work for the state. I need help from you and the other people out here, because as I said, my black counterparts, when I help me, the NAACP speaks up for them, they don't speak up for us. And that's not what they're made for either. They're made for the smaller person, the smaller person that has a real problem. I don't like to be in the situation that I am in. So once again, Mr. Martin, this is the humane part in me. Forget what you've heard, forget what people have said. I am coming to you humbly and honestly asking you for the investigation of my assault, what I went through, just the assault. I ain't asking you to be no judge, I can handle that. I can go and stand in front of a court and deal with whatever I got to, but the assault, the abuse, I'm asking you to look into that, sir, because you can. Can we do that? You did promise me that, you said we will look into it, it's on tape.
I won't go into any details, but thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
Our next speaker is Ms. Kwameke Shavers. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, county chair, county commissioners, county manager, and also county attorney, Mr. Gordon Watkins. I'd just like to play a clip, because I know that you would appreciate this clip.
We don't have the statutory authority to loan money to the school system, that's come up several times. We don't have that authority. If the state were to pass--
On September 25th, Attorney Gordon Watkins stated that the board does not possess the statutory authority to loan the school board or any other entity money. However, it is understood that the board has the discretion to allocate additional funds. This leaves me somewhat confused. Today, we are here to witness a board vote on whether the $5 million should be forgiven. If the board did not have the authority to issue the loan to begin with, wouldn't it be considered a gift rather than a loan? In that case, wouldn't a vote on this matter be unnecessary? As I learn about the duties and responsibilities of a competent county commissioner within Forsyth County, I recognize that there may be aspects that I'm unaware of. If that is the case, and a vote is indeed protocol, then I absolutely encourage you to support alleviating the $5 million allotment given to the school board. Allotment given to the school board to cover SRO and medical expenses. Forgiving the $5 million debt could certainly be instrumental in saving jobs within our community. However, I must express my confusion regarding the process of reaching this decision on an action that seems to reflect a misstep by the board, although with great intentions to support our school board facing a very challenging situation. Lastly, I want to highlight my concern regarding the presence of only six county commissioners today. This situation raises the possibility of a 3-3 deadlock, which could result in the motion failing. If that happens, what are the implications for the school board and our community, respectfully, without the statutory authority to loan the money? It should be regarded as a gift and referred to as such. Thank you for your attention, and I look forward to clarity on this matter. Have a great day.
Our next speaker is Jamal Wumble. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, county commissioners, chairman, board, manager, others. My name is Jamal Wumble, I live at 100 block of Forsyth, excuse me, of Forest View Drive. I'd like to talk about the $5 million debt to the school board that is being considered. This is not really my forte to speak, although I've spoken before. I just want to give my side and probably some people's side that have not, who do not have the ability to be here today. So I would like to start off with respectfully comments made by temporary superintendent Catty Moore. She said that if we, and this is paraphrasing, of course, she said, "If we do not have the funds, then we cannot pay for any ideals, any programs that are out there." She said that. If we don't have it, we can't pay for it. And also, I want to respectfully repeat the comments that were said publicly by Commissioner Dan Bessie, and I want to say this respectfully, sorry. He said that while we are county commissioners, we are commissioners for the whole county. We have to be the commissioners for fire, for EMS, for the police, for anything that the county needs, any expenses, any programs, we have to be county commissioners for the whole county. So with that being said, this is not a problem, as has been stated before, that they created. And one can make an argument that it's not a problem that even the school board created. Mismanaged funds, yes. To where mechanisms were not in place to prevent any kind of mishap or abuse, yes, we can say that. However, funds were mismanaged, and I do not want to have reallocation of funds to pay for somebody's, I'll say, mismanagement or lack of skills. And we've had people here in this county that have wanted to drag funds from the police department to help out with other financial needs. That is a reallocation that is not necessary. So while taxes might not be raised to pay for this, a reallocation from key services is also not warranted. And I would like to say this on a biblical matter, and I do bring the Bible and Jesus Christ into this, because our founders, while though they had problems, they did create a document that is strong, that is lasting, that we all follow today, and this constitution that I'm referencing was built on Christian Judeo principles. And this is the best document that we have, and it's the longest document throughout the world in all known governments. So I think it stands true that when you have Christian Judeo principles, then it lasts. So saying that, I want to say this, referencing Matthew 25, I hear the beat, I wrap it up, just a few seconds. So it says, in Matthew 25:15, talking about the person that's been given the talents, that person was given those talents to multiply those talents, not to waste those talents. So how are we using our talents? Then also, going back to Acts 10, to where God shows the favorability, this has been turned into a racial issue, and it's been turned into a low-income issue. While those issues might persist, God showed no partiality. I'm here trying to show no partiality. I want to talk about the numbers, I want to talk about the problem, and not have a personal tax against any people. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Our next speaker is Karen Cuthrill. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I am Karen Cuthrill, 500 West Fifth Street, and I stand before you on behalf of more than the 500 residents, asking you to stop the upset bid process for Skyland. This isn't just about property, it's about people. Once again, the black community in Forsyth County is being forced to fight for what already should belong to us and belonged to us at one time. There are two bidders at this point, one proposing affordable housing and the other proposing a community HUD. The bid listed as affordable housing is misleading, when the median income in the neighborhood is $19,000, and the homes are priced at $260,000. That's not affordable, it's exclusion for those in the community going against your fourth, 2045. The community hub, on the other hand, is about inclusion. It will preserve Skyland's legacy while creating space for learning, healing, entrepreneurship, and opportunity, economic opportunity. It will serve children, families, and small businesses, building equity, not erasing it. Let's be clear, Forsyth County's budget is about $589 million. The $200,000 at stake right now equals 50 cents per residence for Forsyth County. 50 cents right now won't change Forsyth County, but turning Skyland into a community hub will. Skyland is not a home, it's a building targeted for affordable housing, once again, that's not affordable. Your actions are the new face of urban renewal, wrapped in polite language, but rooted in the same white supremacist logic that displaced families on Graham Avenue back in the '70s and Happy Hill today. With Skyland, we've moved from displacing families to displacing a building that could build a community that thrives emotionally and economically. I'm just one person standing before you asking what belongs to us be returned to us. This county is divided by race, and we want to preserve our history in our space. We are organizing, and let me just say, everyone organizing doesn't look like me, and everyone goes to the polls. Those of us that feel the sting of oppression as you crack the whip on Skyland are united. We want a win for our people, we want a win for our community. And as the old Jay says, "I know that money is the root of all evil, doing funny things to some people. Give me a nickel, brother, can you spare a dime?" Money can drive some people out of their minds, for the love of money. 50 cents won't change Forsyth County. Don't let the love of money stop us from doing something good. The way you handle this, the way that you handle this is going to make a change, handle it correctly.
Our next speaker is Marcy West. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, thanks for having me. Marcy West, county commissioner, candidate for District B and 331 Carolina Circle is my address. I'm here because I want to ask you to consider voting in favor of forgiving the loan for Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools as a method of doing a match from outside donors. It is unfortunate that we have this situation, there's definitely a need for accountability, but punishing the schools is not the way to do that. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and Forsyth County, it shouldn't be us or them, we are one, and we rise and fall the same, okay? We rise and fall together. So it's important to note that our schools are absolutely required. Good, strong public schools are required for economic growth, for us to bring new residents here, and as we leave this in a shambles and we say it's somebody else's problem to figure out, we're going to lose businesses coming here, we're going to lose residents, we're going to really be damaging Forsyth County. So it's really important that we address this issue, and we get it addressed quickly, and we move on. The other thing I want to talk about is the fact that we really do need to take accountability and have some oversight. There's definitely a lack of trust in the school board in the process that's going on. There's been a proposal for an audit committee. I would say that an audit committee is too late. You need to do something where you're looking at your current finances and not wait until the year is over, and you pick an auditor, and you check on findings. You need something in addition to that audit check. What you need to be doing is have a group of people who understand financing, who are looking at those finances on a regular basis, they're making advisory recommendations to the school board based on the financial components, the school board's going to bring in what they come in, and they would do the voting on that. I actually spent nine years on a similar committee, a finance committee, in Reading, Massachusetts, where we met and we reviewed every single financial decision that was being made by the town, and we recommended to the Board of Selectment. And I really urge you not to take a stand and approve what has been proposed now, but I think there's more work that needs to be done that can bring a much better impact for Forsyth County. Thank you.
Chairman Martin, we have also just established a temporary connection with Vice Chair Wizenhut, and our last and final speaker is Ms. Jennifer Easter. Could you please come forward and state your name and address for the record?
Jenny Easter, 5120 Paramount Road, Poughtown, North Carolina, 27040. Good afternoon, commissioners. As you know, I serve as president of the Forsyth County Association of Educators, our public school staff union. While we might have felt some type of way with the yearly budget we got in June, I do want to come and thank you for trying to find a way to help us move forward with this resolution presented today. That effort means a lot to the people in our schools who are carrying the weight of this moment every single day. Every cut creates an added duty that falls on someone already stretched to the limit, and we simply cannot afford to lose any more staff along the way. Funding this debt isn't just about fixing a balance sheet, it's about protecting the human infrastructure of our schools and our children's educational future. Because when our schools struggle, Forsyth County struggles. Every classroom vacancy, every delayed bus, every cut program ripples out and affects our families and our neighborhoods, and ultimately, our local economy. So on behalf of FCAE and the thousands of school employees that we represent, thank you for being willing to look for a path forward and to act. This is a moment to work in ways we never have before, to protect the people who care for, feed, and educate our children. And let me be clear, coming to the table again to address this district's debt is not just because it gets more publicity than other situations, as stated from a prior speaker. It's because helping our district helps our staff and our students, and that strengthens both of our schools, both our schools and our counties' future. Thank you.
I'm pleased that, in fact, I'd like to, if there are no objections, that we go ahead and consider item 20, because I know that Vice Chair Wizenhut has got a little window of time to talk about it, and this is an item that she was interested in voting on particularly. And after we finish this item, I know we have a couple discussion items, both that have guests here, Dr. Spriggs and Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., Ellis Kifer, we can return to that, and then the rest of our agenda, we'd be fine. We could probably mix it that way. So if we could, I'd like to ask that we consider item 20, which is a resolution that was prepared by our attorney to actually talk about a possible way to match funds if they were raised privately, and I'm going to ask Gordon Watkins, our attorney, to actually come forward and review the resolution. It's had just a couple of very minor edits that really have nothing to do with our approving to match or not match, but it really has to do with how the dollars would be paid out, and I'll let him, he actually has this on the Elmo that can be shared.
Yes, thank you. I'm not very proficient at using the machine formerly known as Elmo, so--
You got it, you're good.
There we go. There we go. I'll adjust that as I need to. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you discussed at the briefing on Monday, there was an interest among the board to have prepared this resolution, and I worked with the county manager on this. This resolution is designed, per your discussion on Monday, to be a one-for-one forgiveness of the up to $5 million and change that the school system owes the county. The money would be raised by private individuals. I distributed to you a first draft, and since then, there's been some suggestions among the funders, potential funders, that we changed the language slightly, because the way it was originally written in the added item you have before you, it was assumed by me that the money would go directly to the school system and the school system would pay NCDPI and if there's more money than 3.4 million, the other debtors. What I've been told is that it may be the case that the money will go to a private foundation, and that foundation will pay the debtors directly. So the changes I have on the Elmo before you, as the chairman indicated, are relatively minor, but I've added just a couple phrases in here, and you have this before you at your desk. There is, you can see down here, it adds charitable organizations, just to emphasize that donations may come from them. And, I'm sorry.
I apologize for interrupting, but in all fairness to the community, I would like for us to just kind of take this paragraph by paragraph. I know that we've made some changes, if you don't mind. And I would like to just kind of make some comments relative to each paragraph, if I can, with the help of our county manager. We've kind of fast-tracked this in efforts to get some support, so if we could do that, that would be helpful for me.
And do you want me to read the whereas's or the 1 through 8?
The whereas's would be fine. It's fine.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
And if you want me to stop, just let me know. Okay, I'll just read it then. And this is the amended version. Okay. Whereas Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools currently owes Forsyth County approximately $5,26,336.90, the county debt, for the county's provision of school resource officers and nurses to the school system during fiscal year 2024-25, which Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools failed to pay as required by interlocal agreement.
Okay, so I'd like to stop there and have our county manager address the policy change that we have made, so that that is a consideration that will not be happening moving forward.
Sure. So a couple months ago, this board adopted a resolution in collaboration with the schools, which essentially states that we will no longer send the funds for school resource officers and nurses to the schools, because ultimately, what we were doing was sending them the funds for them to send back to us, and so we're not doing that anymore. We are keeping those funds to essentially just manage ourselves.
That is correct. Thank you.
And their budget has been adjusted accordingly?
Yes.
And I'll just add, in response to a comment that was made by one of the speakers during the public session, there was a contract between, that's the interlocal agreement, it was a contract between the county and the school system. There has basically been a breach of that contract by the school system. It was not a loan.
That is correct, sir.
But it was a breach of contract, so we are owed the money, and that's what we're talking about right now.
Yes. Thank you for that clarification.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just because we're not dealing with lawyers, for the most part, in the public, and this is a widespread, apparently misunderstanding that this is a loan. As you indicated, it is not a loan. It's more equivalent to say, if I, as a homeowner, hire someone to mow my lawn, and I don't pay him, I owe him a debt. It's not a loan, but it's basically payment for services, and this is more closely aligned to the equivalent of payment for services and is a debt that we can, if we choose, conditionally forgive based on other actions.
That's correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, since you want clarity, I don't intend to say much today, but since we're on this matter, Ms. Chairman, about the resource officers that the county allocated funds for in the 25-year. Although the money was allocated, state how the service kept on carrying on or being done and how it was being paid for as time went along.
Yes, sir. So for fiscal year 25, we provided the funds to the schools for school resource officers and school nurses. We invoiced them. They did not pay us for providing the service. However, we did still provide the service, so schools were still secure, healthcare was still provided, so there was no termination of services. However, we were not paid back for providing the services.
And also, the county had to continue to pay for that being done?
That is correct. We paid our employees, the school resource officers are county employees, they're sheriff's office employees, and the nurses are county employees as well. And so we continued to pay our employees, even though we did not receive reimbursement from the schools.
Thank you. I'll continue to the second paragraph. Whereas WSFCS currently owes approximately $3.4 million NCDPI debt to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, NCDPI, for overdrawing its monthly allotments during fiscal year 2024-25. Whereas WSFCS owes additional amounts, which is known as additional debt, to other vendors for services provided during fiscal year 2024-25. Whereas WSFCS is committed to reforming its handling of finances in order to prevent the misspending of its funds, but WSFCS lacks sufficient resources to repay the county debt, the NCDPI debt, or the additional debt without endangering its services to students. Whereas the Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of supporting WSFCS while also maintaining fiscal responsibility on behalf of Forsyth County taxpayers.
Okay, so can we just stop right there? County Manager Robinson, can you address the particular current debt that we're talking about forgiving right now and how it is not affecting, moving forward, a tax increase or rate for constituents, please?
Yes, ma'am. So as the attorney stated, the school system owes us a little over $5 million. That should have been paid to us in fiscal year 25. Because they did not reimburse us by September 30th of 2025, it is something that we will see on our annual audit, because it essentially will impact our fund balance for fiscal year 25. And so our fund balance will be reduced by that amount, since we did not receive the payment. And so for, so as I've stated previously, essentially, the damage has already been done in that regard. We're now in fiscal year 26. We are allocating our full, you know, funding to them for this fiscal year and moving forward. Certainly, and so there's no tax increase that is associated with providing them with these funds. Essentially, they aren't paying us back for dollars that we covered for them last year.
And could you speak to, this is a question that I sent to you and our county attorney, Gordon Watkins, relative to the decline, triple decline of enrollment and how we provided service or provided the budget for the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools based upon the property taxes, not enrollment?
Yes, ma'am. So in this fiscal year, fiscal year 26, we did provide the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools funds based on a funding formula that essentially provides funds based on property tax growth. And so they received about $6.7 million increase for recurring funds. Our funding formula does not take into consideration enrollment, or the new funding formula does not take into consideration enrollment, but our funding has continued to increase while enrollment has continued to decrease.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. You may continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas the Board desires to encourage and promote collaborative investment in public education by local donors, charitable organizations, and the business community in order to return WSFCS to financial stability. And whereas the Board finds it in the public interest to authorize a conditional forgiveness of the county debt by crediting dollar-for-dollar the funds raised from private sources to be used by WSFCS to repay the NCDPI debt and the additional debt. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby approves the conditional forgiveness of all or a portion of the county debt as follows. One, WSFCS will work with private parties to raise funds to repay WSFCS's outstanding debt, and WSFCS shall provide the county manager with a record of all funds raised on at least a monthly basis.
Mr. Watkins, I just want to highlight the private parties. So what's the saying for Forsyth County Schools would work with private parties? Will they be privileged to who these private parties are? How would this work? Do you know, maybe this is a question for the county manager?
It's my understanding that at least the school board chair and possibly others are already working with private parties to hopefully establish funds to raise.
Is there any, I would think, because the school system is a public entity, when you start talking about private kind of dealings, does that run contrary to what protects citizens around public school education? So I would think that there could definitely just be, in general, some concerns from the public that private investors, so are they going to, if they remain private but have influence, does that then raise, obviously, you know, issues just from a regular citizen perspective? But do you see anything legal that could arise around private parties in public schools?
So the private parties would only have influence to the extent that the school board grants them influence. Obviously, money can change things. We all know that. So it would be up to the Board of Education to ensure that they are still maintaining their values as a public entity. Having said that, you know, the school board and schools raise lots of money from private individuals. I was the president of the band fans at West Forsyth, and we raised a lot of money because we needed to raise money for band instruments and things like that. And so there are many, many examples, PTAs, all sorts of things. So raising the money itself is something that is allowed.
Yeah. So I guess from the citizen perspective, we just want to make sure that they're not clandestine kind of organizations, meaning the unnamed. So a PTA, we all know that, although private, and, you know, booster clubs, although I grant you technically private, I think the concern would be if there are groups that are, you know, unknown and therefore could affect and have influence on school board decisions.
Commissioner Woodbear, what I would say is, I think it's probably just the terminology we're using. I'm not under the impression that anyone is going to be confidential. I think it's really just the terminology we're trying to capture for any donor, charitable organization, business organization. I'm not under the impression that anyone will be confidential, but I also can't speak fully to that.
Yeah, someone may want to make a donation anonymously. That happens a lot. People make anonymous donations. I think the purpose of what we're looking at here, this resolution, is to make it clear how the dollars that are donated will be handled, so that it can't go to some other kind of thing. It's not an influencing thing. It is a focus on debt, and I think that our attorney's done a very good job covering all potential issues to explain that, so that any contribution, how it must be handled after it is received.
If I may, Chairman Martin asks you for the dinner and debt, how will those checks or the payments be, who are they making those payments to?
Well, that's what this kind of policy is getting to, that point, is, I mean, if a citizen were to go to something like that, the question might be, well, okay, I'm willing to give you X, you know, who do I write a check to? Or who do I do that? So that information will be controlled by where it's going, how it's being, the mechanism of this policy.
And that's not spelled out in the policy?
It is not.
It's not?
That is correct.
Because as far as I know, we're not making that decision.
Yeah, but I could eat, you could easily see the check conceivably could go to the school district, it could go to a foundation, because I think the Educational Foundation has talked about how it's playing a role. I think it could go to those, it's going to go to some place that I assume is charitable, tax exempt.
If I may, there's actually a reference in the second, in the very next paragraph. It says, "Funds received by WSFCS or by any private organization raising funds on behalf of WSFCS will be forwarded as soon as practicable to NCDPI to repay the NCDPI debt. And the WSFCS or any other party making payment shall provide notice to the county manager within five days of each such repayment, including the source of the funds used for each payment." So that would speak directly to, if it's coming from a foundation, which foundation is it coming from? And then if it was, you know, whatever that foundation does to track donations that they receive for specific purposes would be the trail that could be followed if that were a point of concern.
Sure. So the point of concern for me, Commissioner Bessie, with all due respect, is, again, we're trying to ensure that there is community confidence, right? And for all the things that have transpired thus far, I want to be, as the accountable commissioner here, in that this dinner and debt that's happening, I want to ensure that the dollars that are given is earmarked for the debt and that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools cannot utilize it for anything else.
Yes, that is in here, in the policy. What I was referring to is, it doesn't say specifically which foundation is handling the money initially, but Commissioner Bessie has read the second paragraph.
I heard it, yeah. I just wanted to just put that out there, just to make sure that we have crossed every T and dotted every I.
What I will say is, if it's not used for debt, we would not be forgiving our $5 million. I mean, we can't control what the private donors, where that money is going, but what we can control is, when we verify, if we verify it did not go to debt, we would not be forgiving our up to $5.
That's fair. All right. Thank you.
So I'll just.
Continue.
Read the second paragraph. Funds received by WSFCS or by any private organization raising funds on behalf of WSFCS will be forwarded as soon as practicable to NCDPI to repay the NCDPI debt. And the WSFCS or any other party making payment shall provide notice to the county manager within five days of each such repayment, including the source of the funds used for each payment. Once the county manager has received confirmation from NCDPI of repayment of any portion of the NCDPI debt using privately raised funds, the county shall forgive a portion of the county debt equal to each repayment. So that could take place over many different payments. Number four, after the NCDPI debt has been paid off in its entirety, any excess funds raised privately shall be used to repay additional debt in such amounts and to such parties as jointly authorized by the WSFCS Board of Education and the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, with the party making payment providing notice to the county manager within five days of each such repayment. within five days of each such repayment, including the source of the funds used for each payment." So that would mean, for example, if suppose the private parties raised $4 million, so the 3.4 initially would go to pay off the state debt, and then the remaining $600,000 would go to the debtor that the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners jointly decide is the one that needs to be paid next.
Sure.
Number five, "Once the county manager has received confirmation from a debtor of repayment of any portion of additional debt as jointly authorized by the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners using privately raised funds, the county shall forgive a portion of the county debt equal to each such repayment, provided that the total forgiveness of county debt shall not exceed $5,26,336.90. Six, the county's forgiveness of any portion of the county debt as set forth herein must take place on or before December 31, 2025, and no additional forgiveness of the county debt shall occur after such date unless the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners amends this resolution to authorize such forgiveness. Seven, the county manager is authorized to coordinate with WS FCS, NC DPI, and other parties to verify funds used to repay the NC DPI debt and the additional debt, and to implement the provisions of this resolution. And eight, this resolution shall have no effect upon any amounts or debts owed by WS FCS to the county other than the county debt as defined herein."
Awesome.
I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Gordon.
Thank you, Gordon.
Any additional... Are we ready to any of the presentation issues? Everybody understand the issues? We're good. So do we have a motion relative to this resolution?
I move to approve this motion, Chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner McDaniel and a second by Commissioner Bessie. Is there further discussion?
I would just like to put on record that although it is not, I don't think the county's issue more so than it is the school board's issue to really understand what the cooperation is with these, with the private organization. I highly encourage that there be movement through a foundation versus individuals wanting to write a check, so that no one on the school board is seen to, you know, be collecting or being influenced, that's what I would say, influenced by individuals making per se donations. So I hope that there is a very concerted, public, transparent process by which the citizens, you know, feel like that it's not because, you know, obviously, these individual donors do have disposable income to support. And believe me you, I'm grateful. I'm so grateful that people are stepping up that can help the school district. But I think we just need to do it in a very, you know, transparent, proactive way, so that we can, you know, move forward without any hesitation. I think there also may be some issues with, I know when funds are in certain accounts, then charter schools are able to also be able to have access to the funds. So I hope that there is some consideration around, you know, the dollars are only going to Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools and not the charter schools.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you for adding this item up on the agenda. I am out of town for a North Carolina commissioner meeting. I spoke of my concerns on Monday, but I wanted to address a few of them again. I truly appreciate the community being involved in helping with this debt. I only wish they had not involved the county commissioners. There are many taxpayers who do not want us involved in repaying this debt. And so with the community becoming involved, then the folks who want to help have the opportunity to help, and the folks that do not want their tax dollars to go to this do not have to worry. So, but I'm still committed to Forsyth County's financial stability, and I still am concerned about our fund balance. But thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Other discussion?
Just, if I may, just a couple of points that I think we discussed on Monday, but again, bear reiterating. Other than seeking private donations, the local school district managed by the independently-elected Board of Education in Forsyth County has no way to raise funds on its own. It gets money from Congress in a relatively small amount compared to the other sources, in large amount from the state and in substantial amount from Forsyth County. What we are trying to do with this proposed resolution is to help avoid the situation where the school board and the school system are required to make additional cuts this year in spending going to the schools, to the classroom, primarily to pay for personnel like teachers. And this would use the debt that the school system owes to the county, which it frankly doesn't have right now and no way of getting right now except for additional cuts to the schools. We're using partial or complete forgiveness of their debt of $5 million to the county to incentivize private donors to contribute. Because as we were, have been told before, it's a lot easier to get private donations to pay for school supplies than it is to get private donations to pay off debt. But if somebody doesn't pay off this debt, particularly starting with the debt that is owed to the state of North Carolina, it is going to ultimately cost the taxpayers more because of the interest that is being charged monthly on that. State legislative leaders have already said to us and to the school system and to the public that they will not consider school system requests for assisting with the debt this year. But the State Department of Public Instruction is requiring the school system to start paying interest effective this, you know, this month.
October 1.
And they are being required to present a plan to the state...
State Board of Education.
Yeah, the State Board of Education by November 4, I believe, on how they're going to do it. And right now, the only thing they can tell them is we're going to make more cuts in what we're paying to the schools this year. This would provide an alternate possibility for inclusion in the plan reported to the board. So, I mean, for all those reasons, ultimately, this is going to save the taxpayers money by eliminating that unnecessary extra debt sooner, and that is one of the reasons why I support it.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes. Well, I've already voted against any money directly being given to the school system because of the misconduct that was involved in the disposition of those multimillion-dollar funds in the past. I do commend the Chair, however, for his engagement with community leaders. I think he's spent a lot of time and effort trying to find a way to provide alternate funding with this dollar-for-dollar provision. I did try to listen to everything the other commissioners said in the discussion on Monday afternoon. I think they were motivated by good intentions, although I was taught that that could sometimes also be the road to perdition. I did vote, however, to allocate an offset with regard to one of the previous funds, because it was for a very special issue where funds were not actually transferred to the school system, and that's what's on the table here right now. I'm still unwilling to make any outright payment of funds from the county to the school system, again, based on the history of what occurred. But I think I would be willing to consider another offset, but only to the extent it's a dollar-for-dollar match by private resources. And the reason is, to me, simple, and that is donors who want to give more to the school system are frankly people who are in a position to do so. And what I don't want to do is to place any further burden on the taxpayers of this county, the people who struggle to pay their taxes because they have limited means. And so my concern continues to be focused on doing the absolute best we can to minimize the impact to the taxpayers of this county, to keep our taxes in line, to keep our fund balance healthy, and to keep the county, you know, financially responsible as it has always been in the past. And so to the extent there's a dollar-for-dollar match here, you know, my understanding that the county is not forgiving a dime unless it's matched by something that the private community brings forward, I believe that's, you know, a compromise which troubles me, but which I believe I could support.
I just want to, lastly, support this resolution, because I think we clearly understand that there could be, and not could be, that there is a direct impact on our students. And as I sit here as a county commissioner, and I asked my sister if I could, you know, make this public, that her grandson, my great nephew, had an assistant teacher in EC. And that teacher was what? Furloughed, let go. And he is now failing every single class because that extra EC support is no longer there. True indeed, the, his IEP is being met, but the, what we thought was extra support and going beyond in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools was saving children that really needed that support. So I want us to truly understand that, you know, we can go back and forth about all of this money and this, but children's lives are on the line in Winston-Salem Forsyth County if we don't move more expeditiously to fix this issue so that we can get back on the right track. And it may not be your family member, but it could be. Thank you.
We've had a lot of discussion, and I don't want to say a whole lot, other than to say, I think, in fact, I see Mark Owens in the back over there from the Greater Winston-Salem Chamber of Commerce. The chamber held a luncheon several weeks ago where education was a focus, and heard from higher education, we heard from Catty Moore. And he actually made a pretty strong statement at the end that really talked about, you know, our community coming together to support our schools in a crisis. And we have been in a financial crisis, and I think every single person in this room has had feelings about what that means to us individually, to our children, to teachers, to friends, and, but to our community as a whole and the way it is viewed everywhere else. I mean, we have, we literally have been in the news beyond North Carolina in other states. And it's important for us to begin to move beyond this heavy cloud that is hanging over us and try to find a way out. And I think, I actually think part of his appeal to the number of people who were there is actually motivated folks to say, what can we do to make a difference? And there are some members of our business community who have been active and impart in trying to think about how we could generate some money. And literally, I think, just, I've had, in fact, I've had many emails that I've answered about this, don't, do not do this. And I have answered those basically with, if it were just given money, as Commissioner Wilson said, the answer would be no. But for, to actually match the support of our private community, to actually help our schools and to help us try to move forward. The impact on, yes, there is never, not several people, clearly, not receiving the money back is an impact on the county. There's no way to say there's not an impact. But I think there is a way to say that this particular initiative, this effort, if we were to prove this, will not grow our tax rate. Our tax rate is not going to grow as a result of this. And as the county manager has said from weeks ago, the damage was done on June 30th, when our fund balance was $5 million short. And that is, that is one of the factors that's looked at very carefully in our AAA bond rating, and that's why fund balance is important. It's not just to have a rainy day fund, it's to have the dollars available to maintain a AAA bond rating. When large debts are incurred, we have to have the cheapest rate to impact our county. So with all that said, I'm certainly going to be supportive of this, and if there's nothing else to say, I'll call a question. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. And those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries, five to two. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Martin, before we move forward, I'd like to just say thank you to this board. Weeks ago, when Dr. Catty Moore was here, we talked about the possibility of forgiving what was the debt that was owed to the county. And I had a dream one night, you know, I love to dream, and I thought about my third-grade teacher saying, put your thinking cap on. And I appreciate you for putting your thinking cap on, along with Mark Owens and the Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., and this community coming together to try to match, and I'm hopeful that that will manifest. But I wanted to say thank you for listening. Those commissioners that were indifferent or disagreed, I understand. But I think that we have measures in place that we won't see this, we'll see positivity coming out of it. And the impact for our community is, will be lessened because of that. Thinking through, again, when people are thinking about coming to Forsyth County, the first thing that they look at is the school systems. The second thing they look at is our economic development. So with those things in mind, that's what I was thinking of, not just about the school systems, but these children. And I hope that some of those children, they'll be taking care of me in the by-and-by as I get older. So I wanted to say thank you.
Ms. Chairman, just one other after comment. Speaking particularly to the folks who were stressing the need for accountability, I absolutely agree. Accountability for past serious missteps is essential. But what we voted to do today has no impact on the independent audit underway now to identify more precisely where and how the misdirection of funds took place within the school system. The public is demanding accountability, and I strongly support that as well. But one of our commenters today had what I think was a good analogy. If you've got a building on fire and there's the possibility that that fire was started by arson, you definitely are going to have to have a long-term investigation to ensure that you find out and identify where it started and how, as well as any evidence that it provides you for who was responsible. But you still put the fire out right then. You don't wait until the arson investigation is completed before you douse the flames.
All right. We have two discussion items today, and some folks have been very patient being here. And I'd like to call on Dr. Janet Spriggs, President of Forsyth Tech Community College, to give us a, this is part of our quarterly update that did not get made during our work session. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. And as I start the presentation, let me say thank you also for the resolution honoring Forsyth Tech in the past 65 years. I promise that the next 65, I won't be here for all of those, but I promise that whoever's leading at the next one for 65 more will have done, continued to do the great work that your community college expect, that you expect of your community college. I'm going to start with some photos of our newly opened, I was just at the Transportation Technology Center today. Some of you were here. Dr. Martin, you're in the picture here for being at our ribbon cutting when we opened up the new expansion, paid for by county bond dollars. I was there today. They have moved all the heavy equipment into the new area. The students were actively engaged in learning, and it was quite something to see. So we gratefully appreciate the county's support. We are making good use of that building. We have record enrollment at that campus. We have record enrollment at that campus. The Learning Commons Courtyard project was also finished. Commissioner Bessie, thank you so much for joining us for that celebration. The courtyard is beautiful. We are using it in this gorgeous fall weather almost every day, and our students are really enjoying it. The final part of the Bond Project projects is the Learning Commons Building. I don't have an additional update for you on that today. We are still hoping that we will be able to get some additional funding to complete that project. What I do have good news for you about today is our enrollment. We always talk about not chasing FTE, which is our full-time equivalence and the way we are paid by the state for the work that we do. So we don't chase FTE. I want my faculty and staff to focus on excellent learning and focus on taking care of the students and making sure they're successful. But we do chase students because if we don't have students there, we can't help them create a better future. So you can see this graph from, starting at 2018 fall up to today, and we are growing significantly, 13% from last year. This number that you see, 10,252, is now an incorrect number because as of this morning, we had more students enroll for the second eight-week term, which starts next week, and we're now up to almost 10,300 students. So we are thrilled about this. We are not only seeing more students that are there, but more students being successful. We are closing out our Vision 2025. I think many of you know that and have participated in some of our listening sessions and the work that we've been doing to get stakeholder engagement in Vision 2030. I will share at my final report to you at the end of the year, a full picture of all the outcomes for Vision 2025 that I'm sharing with my board in a couple of weeks, and I want to share with them first, and then we'll share that information with you. But a couple of things that we're very excited about, I could not wait to share. You may have already heard this, if you attended either our gala last week to celebrate our anniversary or the State of Education. We had a goal of increasing overall three-year completion to 40%. We were at 19% when we created Vision 2025. We not only achieved that, but as you see, we exceeded that and have a completion of three-year completion rate now of 43%. We were well below the national average. We're now well above the national average on three-year. And I will also remind everyone that three-year is not, in my opinion, the best completion number to look at because 70% of our students are attending part-time. So it's really hard to complete a two-year degree in three years if you're attending part-time. The other good news is that for our underrepresented minority students, we had a goal of 38%. They were at around 10% prior to Vision 2025 and the strategic work that we've done, and now that number is 42%. So we have created structures and systems that are supporting each and every student. If I look at low-income Pell students, they're doing better as well, and there are no achievement gaps. And we're very, very excited and proud of that. And I'm very proud of the team that's making that happen. I also want to let you know that we were the first college in the community college system in North Carolina to officially launch our Boost program. Boost is funded with $36.5 million from Arnold Ventures for, to start with, 15 of the 58 community colleges, Forsyth Tech being one of those 15, and as I said, the first one to launch. This is a program that was proven in New York's SUNY system to understand some of the challenges that our students have and create structures that mitigate those challenges, ways that we can help students better, be better prepared to learn, that we can incentivize them for doing some of the things we know are good habits for them to be able to keep up to be successful. We have students enrolled in the program, and there was a really good article in Ed N.C. this week that I can send to all of you that tells you a little bit more about how the program works and about specifically what Forsyth Tech is doing. They featured us in their article to talk about some of the great things that we're doing. We also have been working on Vision 2030. Many of you, as I said, have participated. Thank you, Dr. Martin, for being there while I was trying to get home from California. You were there at the college, I believe, helping us with our World Cafe and looking at our new North Star mission, vision, and values that I want to share with everyone today. I hope this video might play, it's only a minute long. Let me see if it works. Oh, sorry, I hit the wrong button. That will not work. Okay. It might not work, which is okay because you've had a long meeting already, and I'll just tell you about it instead. Very quickly, we are adopting a new North Star, which is, as you see here on this chart, our highest purpose. Think of this as why we are here, not just for the next five-year strategic plan, but why we are here forever and what we are doing. And that is the North Star that I'll tell you in just a moment. The vision, then, is the future state that we aim to reach within the next five years. The mission is what we do every day to help us move towards achieving our vision and our North Star. And our values are the threads, the things that we believe have to run through every decision that we make, and it's the way that we work and lead. Our strategic goals and outcomes will be approved by our board in October and December at their planning session in their last meeting of the year. And then, of course, our team's work day-to-day helps us really bring the vision, mission, and values and all of that to fruition. Our board has approved our North Star, our vision, our mission, and our values, and I want to share them with you today. Our North Star is simple: Dream, Learn, Thrive. This is what we wish for every student, every staff and faculty member, every business partner that we have, and every community that we serve. We have a vision to get us to 2030 that Forsyth Tech ensures that everyone, no matter where they start, can rise, thrive, and lead. And our mission is that Forsyth Tech meets learners, oh, sorry, where they are, it empowers them to go as far as their dreams can take them through high-quality education, personalized support, and flexible pathways to thriving careers and stronger communities. And the threads, our values, the threads that run through all of our decisions on a daily basis are here: community, opportunity, integrity, belonging, innovation, purpose, and joy. Our community, our internal and our external stakeholders, our students have participated in this, our public and elected officials, and we are thrilled for how this alignment from our North Star to the work that we do each and every day is going to impact the work that we do over the next five years. We will bring to you at the last report, well, probably the first report in the new year, I will bring to you what our new goals and outcomes will look like so that you can track alongside us how well we're doing at reaching those. I want to say thank you again for recognizing Forsyth Tech, and thank you for always partnering with us, for being at our gala last week where we celebrated 65 years and where we announced our new Future Ready Workforce Alliance that I hope you've all heard about now, that will be a real game changer in how education and business partner to develop our workforce and to develop talent for our area. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Dr. Spriggs. I'll just say congratulations, particularly on your accomplishments of completion rates for the whole college to grow from 19 to 43 in five years is, that's pretty incredible. I kind of remember when you presented the goals back in 2020, and that was a reach. And to exceed that is a lot to be proud of for you and your staff and your students.
Yes, for the students particularly, but I'm really proud of the staff. We thought it was a reach, too, and we reached it, so we're very happy. Thank you, Dr. Martin. I'm going to try to turn this off. There you go. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you. And our second discussion item today, and again, thank you for waiting, is our Greater Winston-Salem, Inc. update. And it looks like Mark Owens is going to do that instead of Ellis, so that's great. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Manager. Appreciate it. Actually, Ellis got a last-minute invite to down with our partners at EDPNC in Charlotte to do a broker event, so she is spreading the news of Forsyth County currently. I'll pull this up just real quick. Well, I'm excited to just share a brief update with you all on our quarterly activity around economic development. Thank you for a partnership with your team and Kirby Robinson and his team that's here as well. Our 2030 goals, we always like to start that we want to be a top mid-sized city for economic growth, a more equitable community, and to be the best place to raise a family. We believe that our economic development efforts help us to achieve those goals. Since 2020, we've had over 2,800 jobs announced with over $793 million of capital investment committed. I'd like to just share, since education is top of mind, we'd love to bring new companies here and have capital investment that is brought to our area so that that helps increase the tax base and add more dollars to our education funds. We have also done an indirect and induced job study, similar to what they do at the state and national level, that has added another 1,700 indirect and induced jobs, and that's $285 million in annual wages across these companies. So the economic impact we're able to measure and have tangible results for you. Just in the last year, some of our recent wins, we've had 403 jobs announced in this calendar year, so we are tracking strong with $50 million of capital investment committed. You can see a list of those jobs. What I think is really exciting is you have two of which, which are expansions, as we work with our existing industries here in Reynolds and Polyglies, and then G-Max, Pep Gel, and Reagent are all new to our community. One's a Chinese company, one's a British company, so we also have a lot of foreign investment looking into our community. Our most recent, want to say thank you for your support, is Reagent Chemical Services to open in Forsyth County in Winston-Salem, $5.6 million in capital investment and 30 total jobs. This was a UK-based company. Appreciate your support, and we're excited to have them welcome and open here soon. Currently, our project pipeline is really at an all-time high with 92 active projects as of this morning. Just in the quarter, this third quarter, we've had 40 new projects. This is something that happens after the summer as people are ramping up, ready to try to make decisions before the end of the calendar year. But year-over-year and quarterly, Q3, we had a 25% increase in that intake from last year. So a special thank you to J.T. Warren and Trey Blackwood on our team that are here today with us as well, and our economic development team, and of course, the entire group at Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., and our partners at Forsyth Tech. We continue to make this a very active pipeline. There's seven site visits in Q3. That may not be all the way updated because we had one this morning and we had one yesterday as well. So we are active in hosting companies to our community. Here's just a trend, as you can see, in terms of our average quarterly project intake, you can see that step up in trend, which is something that we've talked with you about in terms of our efforts of making more outbound calls and being very direct in our outreach. We've had over 10 outbound missions where we've had over 200 direct site consultant and stakeholder interactions outside of the community where we are traveling or are taking opportunities like Ellis just did to go visit with brokers across our state and our region. So continue to have very active pipeline. Existing industry, just this quarter, we've had 14 existing employer visits where we partner with your team here with Andrea and talk about how do we visit our existing employers. It's why our World of Work event coming up, our Work with Manufacturing Week, and Workforce Development Month is so critical because it's the number-one thing we hear from our existing employers. But like I pointed out, some of those, two of those major projects this year are existing industry, so we continue to grow with our companies that have already invested here in our community, and we have more of those coming as well. I'm really excited Forsyth Works, as you got to recognize the workforce efforts today. We thank you for that recognition. We're proud to be able to unveil a video at our annual meeting coming up on November 4th, which is about Forsyth Works, and it's about the process of individual going through workforce development training, workforce credential training, and the economic development recruitment process and how that comes together. So we've been having a good time trying to be actors and figure out how to tell that story because it's the number-one issue that we face. And it's fantastic to have an award-winning, world-renowned Forsyth Technical Community College that helps us make sure that we partner together on these projects. Just something that I learned today, Forsyth Tech is tracking at an amazing rate on customized training for our existing employers here, and so that's another example of our partnership in action. And then just our economic development team, you know most of us, but like to share this, I'd like to share on the bottom as well, Mike Bukowicz and Kami Leslie, our entrepreneurial initiatives. Really exciting today to have that company here that has gone through Center for Creative Economy, Winston Starts, and be able to go into manufacturing, showcasing that pipeline that we're working on as well that you supported earlier. And then Isaac Perry is our Head of Biotech and Life Science. Over the last 14 months, we've had 14 projects come in in the life science space and commit and open up over 100-plus thousand square feet of lab space in our community. Those are projects that are not incentivized, those are projects that are coming here, coming to Innovation Quarter. We're really excited to launch our BioNest Fund in partnership with Whittaker Park Development Authority, to be able to have a private incentive base to help those companies because they normally have between 2 and 10 employees, and they don't qualify for the state and local economic incentive programs. So we have a new way to be able to differentiate ourselves using private money to be able to really recruit and work on that. So what's next? We're continuing to sell our wonderful county, work on our workforce, and work with the Utilities Commission, Courtney Driver, for design phase of those sewer lift station because you can imagine, we don't have space for all 92 of those projects. So we're continuing to look at new product development. How can we work in conjunction with our planning departments and make sure that there's opportunities for new industrial sites that are in line with Project 45 and other plans that are there? So happy to answer any questions that I may, but we appreciate your support, partnership, and are honored to be able to give a report and update to you.
Have one, Mark. Something I'm thinking about today. Do you have an estimate, or there's got to be one, the best one I know of right now that can properly answer it? In Forsyth County, the number of employees that works at the two hospitals and all, and everything in a health-related field, that's...
It's a great question. Commissioner, I don't have a number for you. I'd be happy to try to get that. Our, the way the jobs EQ breaks down, healthcare and education are put together, and it's about a third of our entire employment sector is in healthcare and education. Obviously, we have amazing healthcare. We have six colleges and universities and a robust school system, so that gets lumped together a little bit. I'll be happy to break that down for you on our healthcare, but biotech, life science, healthcare-related is a major differentiator. We're very, very blessed to have two large, really great healthcare systems here that are employing, and that's why you see wonderful programs through Forsyth Tech, Winston-Salem State, nursing directly into our healthcare. We work with our internship programs to help funnel and show kids the quality and opportunities that exist in healthcare, but I will work on a number for you as much as they're willing to share.
When you can get an estimated count, if you would give it to Miss Manager Robinson, and you don't have to count every single individual, just get close to it.
We'll make some calls today and ask for you. Yes, sir.
People talk to me about a lot of different things, traffic a lot of times, traffic and building, all of that. And I said, "Well, people, it's smart people now, not really smart people. You'd wonder why they ask such a question." And I said, "Well, just look at what I was in Forsyth County." I said, "Just take for instance, the hospitals and all of the healthcare field. You've got people moving here that's adding to the population. Just that alone is a lot, plus all the other things, too." And that's the reason I wanted to know the number and to give them a little bit of the insight of what the future is about traffic. Those that live out my way, where it takes about 15 or 20 minutes on a really good day, in the middle of the day, maybe 15, 15 or 20 minutes, it's going to take 30 to 45 in a few years. So they'd probably forget about that by then, but at least I'm warning them.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to check on that number. Obviously, we also have two wonderful healthcare systems that are also destinations from our more rural counties around, so they also attract and bring in individuals seeking world-class healthcare from surrounding areas. It's a regional draw for that. So we also have an influx of individuals coming for care every day in addition to those employees. So it's something I will track down and share with Manager Robinson as well.
She'll be calling you if you don't sometime soon.
Yes, sir. You got it.
I do have a couple of points. So first, thank you so much, Mr. Owens, for your leadership here around economic development in Winston-Salem-Forsyth County. I wanted to, one, just celebrate your team's commitment to really connect us from an international perspective. I will say that probably a year or two ago, I was introduced through NACO, the International Business, it's the International Economic Development Innovation Council, that it's a long, it's a lot of words, I know. I'll email it to you. I'll email it to you. But I was invited to be on the council, and I was very engaged with the work through the National Association of Counties. And I would love to connect you to the chairperson of this council because there could be some strong free resources through our National Association for County Officials. And so I just remind me to do that. The second piece that I wanted to kind of query you on is about an economic impact analysis for the school on our community based on the school district and where we are right now. And so I know that probably you've already had this conversation with our county manager. I wanted to just put it on record for the good of the public that I think the public would be, I think we know that this is a major issue and it's cause for alarm, but I think if we really had some reasonable assessment around what we're looking at and why we need to be very strategic around trying to resolve this issue, then more people in the community, even if they disagree, could say, "Okay, I see the impact that this has had and could have on our community if we don't, you know, kind of deal with this expeditiously."
Absolutely. The economic impact study is, is tough to do this soon after that because sometimes those numbers trail as you have census reports and data reports that come out. It's crucial that we have the best possible school system, not just for the future of our kids, which are going to be the folks sitting in this room here soon, but also currently, as we continue to recruit, as we have companies here that are employing individuals, that they are looking at other alternatives for school than just here in Forsyth County, and that is happening already. So it's, it's hard to get a number on that economic impact, but it's something that is critical, one of the leading questions we get in economic recruitment, but also far existing employers are definitely already asking and telling us that they have employees that are considering moving to surrounding areas in order to access different school systems. So it's going to the school system, economic impact, we could track probably previous from this recent announcements of layoffs, et cetera. But as we go forward, it'll be a little bit harder to track right away, but we will look into that as we go a little bit further out and be able to track the changes in that.
I think maybe even if it's more qualitative and to some degree anecdotal-based than it is quantitative, that could still help citizens understand, you know, just in very, what I call basic layman terms, you know, kind of, and you could compare this to what have probably, just not the first time, I'm sure, in this country's history that you've had an issue, that we've had an issue with the public school district having an issue and affecting, you know, that, that local, that local community. But I just think that we need to have a good sense around what happens, you know, economically when school districts fail.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Like our own item, but Agenda Item 7 now. If we go back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioner, staff, and guests. The agenda items before you have been briefed and hopefully questions answered. Agenda Item Number 7 is an amendment to the Fiscal Year 26 Budget Ordinance to appropriate funds from Blue Cross and Blue Shield of North Carolina. This appropriates $16,000 to the Public Health Department and will fund two sessions of Respectful Care Maternity Simulator for the Improving Community Outcomes for Retinal and Child Health Program.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a motion from Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Bessie? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 8 is an amendment to the County Capital Projects Fund to appropriate interest earnings from State Capital Infrastructure Fund awards for Tanglewood Clubhouse and Agricultural Park projects. The amount of interest earnings available from the agricultural park is $123,962.11, and the amount from the Tanglewood Clubhouse is $31,327.34.
I'm happy to make that motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 9 is an amendment to the Fiscal Year 26 Budget Ordinance to appropriate a North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources grant for the America 250 project in the amount of $10,000.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Limble, second, please. I'll happen to second it. I'm second, I'll second it, along with Commissioner Woodbury. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 10 is an amendment to the Fiscal Year 26 Budget Ordinance to appropriate countywide overlay fire tax fund balance to facilitate training opportunities for the county fire system in the amount of $15,000.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by both Commissioners Limble and Bessie. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 11 is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Mobile Communications America, Inc. for the purchase of communications equipment to support the county fire system and an associated amendment to the Fiscal Year 26 Budget Ordinance to appropriate countywide overlay fire tax fund balance for Mobile Communications America, Inc. communications equipment to support the county fire system. This will provide 244 pagers and chargers in a total amount not to exceed $220,178.28.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Limble, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 12 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with I-3 Verticals LLC for website and operating system administration and maintenance. This is for maintenance and support of the Register of Deeds online system in an amount not to exceed $65,310. And during this fiscal year, I'll work with the Register of Deeds of what this may look like in future years.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 13 is a resolution awarding a contract and authorizing execution of an agreement for the purchase of uninterruptible power supply, which is UPS Maintenance Services and Replacement Batteries for the Sheriff's Office 911 Communication Center, Radio Equipment and Information Technology Server Room. This is in agreement with National Power LLC to replace 144 batteries at three UPS units and related maintenance at the Public Safety Building in an amount not to exceed $58,680.
Do we have a motion? Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 14 is a resolution authorizing the use of a fuel card, fuel credit card program for the purchase of gasoline, diesel, and other designated motor fuels at stations with extensive accessibility in an amount not to exceed $1.5 million.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion?
Yes, so I am approving this. However, the policy, we've talked about that previously before, so I just wanted to aforementioned that again. Thank you.
Got it. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 15 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement with Schindler Elevator Corporation for elevator and escalator maintenance services. This amends the three-year contract to add three airport facility elevators in a not-to-exceed amount of $430,008.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 16 is a resolution authorizing execution of a landlord's release agreement for county-owned real property located at 5755 Shattillon Drive in favor of Town Bank. Arca occupies this property, and it's establishing a line of credit with Town Bank. If approved, Town Bank will acquire a security interest in Arca's personal property, including attached fixtures located within the county-owned facility. The landlord's release agreement is required to finalize this line of credit. Arca has stated that the line of credit is necessary to ensure continuous operations of its substance use treatment facility in the event of delays receiving approved funding from other sources.
Do we have a motion? Happy to make a motion to approve. Is we have a second? Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to be certain that I understand clearly, the, the lien would be on the personal property of the tenant and on attached fixtures only.
That's the way I understand it.
That's correct. There's, there's no lien on real property that the county owns.
Very good.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 17 are seven appointments to the Forsyth County Health and Human Services Board, and I will turn those over to our chair.
Thank you very much, Madam, Madam County Manager. We have, again, just as we did a week ago, a lot of people interested in serving, in this case, on the Health and Human Services Board. And you have ballots at your places, and there are two appointments for four-year terms expiring September 2029, and these are at-large seats. There are two incumbents wishing to serve, John Blalock and Fleming Elamine, and there are 3, 6, 9, 10, 11 folks, citizens wishing to serve, Alicia Bowles, Sarah Buchanan, Sharika Floyd, Ivy Hardy, Shannon McCarthy, Giancarlo Spinelli, Tonya Henigan, Carla Day, Peter Gal, Janaria Shepherd, and Melissa Parker.
Chairman, John Blalock and Fleming Elamine received majority vote.
All righty. If you look at your second ballot, it is for, again, for the Health and Human Services Board, there's one appointment to a four-year term expiring September 2029. This physician is for a dentist, and we have two citizens wishing to serve, Dr. Robert Stowe, who has been serving, and Dr. Kenneth Sadler. Please vote for one. Next, we actually have an appointment to a four-year term for the position of physician. We only have one, which is our current incumbent, Dr. Richard Lord. I'd like to make a motion that we approve by acclamation.
Mr. Chair, hold on just one second.
I'm, oh, excuse me, you're not finished. I apologize. Ready to move on.
There has been a tie between Dr. Sadler and Dr. Stowe.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Kenneth Sadler received majority vote.
All righty. Now, this is where I jumped ahead, but we actually, we, Dr. Richard Lord is the incumbent and the only citizen wishing to serve as in the, in the position of physician, and I'd like to make a point, a motion that we approve by acclamation. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I do just want to clarify, Dr. Lord is new. Dr. Robey, who's been on the board for a long time, actually decided to resign from the board, so I just wanted to clarify.
He is new, right, right here. Thank you. Thank you for saying that. The next we have also for the Forsyth County Health and Human Services Board, we have an appointment to a four-year term expiring September 29. This is for the capacity of a psychologist. We have two folks wishing to serve, incumbent Brooke Griffith and a citizen wishing to serve Joshua Zysel. Please vote for one. Thank you. Next, we have an appointment for four-year term for the capacity of veterinarian, and we have only one applicant who is also incumbent, I'm correct on that, Dr. Calvert Jeffers. I'd like to make a motion that he be approved by acclamation.
Second.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And we have no applicants for the position of professional engineer, so we will continue to a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda Item Number 18 is a resolution approving refunds by the Tax Assessor Collector in the amount of $4,707.84.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Limble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 19 are the August 2025 Contribution-Based Benefit Cap Report.
Do we have a motion for reports?
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Limble to approve reports. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We've already handled Item 20, and we've had two of the three discussion items. So we're actually, we're very patiently waiting. It's Christopher Ong, our internal auditor, and he's going to talk a little bit about the, his membership in the IIA that we discussed on Monday with the External Audit Committee. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon. So it is staff's understanding that the board has requested information regarding the IIA Association. So I'll share some information about IIA as well as my experience with the organization. So the, the big thing is the IIA stands for the Institute of Internal Auditors. It's a global professional organization that provides standards, certifications, and guidance for the profession of internal auditing to ensure organizational effectiveness, risk management, and strong governance. I don't need it. Thanks. I don't need it, thanks. Did you want me to do?
You're not going to pull up your slideshow?
Well, I was going to focus more on the IIA thing, but I was just going to mention it briefly.
Okay.
So anyway, the organization was established in 1941. It serves over 260,000 internal audit professionals, represents more than 170 countries and territories. It operates through a network of local chapters. The purpose of the organization is to advance and elevate the internal auditing profession globally, which essentially means supporting its members with the tools and guidance to better assist the organizations that employ them. The services, some of the member services provided by the IIA could be lumped into three broad categories: standards, professional development, and networking. So from a more tangible perspective, meaning how the services offered connect with the purpose of the organization, the IIA developed the Red Book, or Global Internal Audit Standards, which is essentially the global benchmark for the internal audit profession. Those standards provide the framework for internal auditors to deliver the assurance and consulting services. Other standards and guidance include quality assurance, professional code of ethics that we're required to adhere to. In terms of professional development, the organization offers a suite of globally-recognized certifications, primarily the Certified Internal Auditor, and another one is the Risk Management Assurance Certification, and they provide opportunities for continuing professional education credits. There is a triad chapter of the IIA which supports internal auditors from this region, the Piedmont Triad region, and I'll touch a little bit on my experience. So the county, Forsyth County Internal Audit Staff, which essentially is a two-person shop, we have membership in the IIA and its local chapter. So regarding standards and guidance, those Global Internal Audit Standards are the standards that guide the internal audit function in this county. On the professional development side, we have benefited from some of the virtual training opportunities offered, which helps us maximize our professional training budget by eliminating related expenses such as travel, accommodation, and meals. Also, from a personal perspective, I'm in the process of obtaining the CIA certification through the IIA. So in keeping with time considerations, that's about all that I've got. I did have, I did have a slide that I'd be happy to share with you all or through the manager's office, which basically, there's really four professional organizations that have a little bit of overlap, and so I did kind of a deep dive compare and contrast between them to try, you know, that could provide some context for you all if you are interested in seeing that. But I did not want, I decided not to go through all that right now, again.
You could actually send us your slide deck, which would be great.
Yeah, yes.
We would get that, but.
Sure, yes.
It's essentially one slide, and it talks about IIA, and then there's another professional organization, that's the Association of Local Government Auditors, and the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, and then Government Finance Officers Association, really just explaining, you know, there are different organizations that do, that's responsible for different kinds of things. I think the other thing that Christopher shared with me offline is that the local chapter really hasn't been, from his staff, super engaged, don't really know how to get in contact with them either, although we're a local member, their website doesn't work.
I did, I was going to say, I did find, I did find some contact addresses, but that's about all, like John tells, that we really haven't had any interaction with the local chapter.
So it's not likely we'll have volunteers. That was the website I looked at, that volunteers, you know, kind of thing, so perhaps that's our chapter's not likely. Go ahead. In fact, he may piggyback on that.
Actually, I was thinking whether you had a recommendation amongst the other groups as to who might have a local presence and be interested in what we're talking about.
Well, thank you for that. I guess in the context of the discussion that the board was having, I would just, one of the comments that I would probably make is that I think the, something like the AICPA is a little more relevant to external auditors or independent auditors and the independent auditing process, whereas, you know, the IIA is essentially for internal auditors. And so your independent auditor is going to come and essentially, you know, audit the financial statements, and they follow the guidance of the, and Terry, feel free to correct me if I say something wrong, but I think they follow the generally accepted accounting standards as opposed to the standards that we follow. So that's important. And going back to something that you had said, I did find that website, and I think the volunteers part was for members, for internal auditors to volunteer for whatever projects that, that the, I guess the regional chapter gets involved in.
I was thinking this could have been a regional project. Could have been a project, help us vet these, you know, applicants for, you know, an independent committee, but I hear that may be out of reach.
You mentioned three basic functions at the outset, I call it. One was standards, one was networking. What was the third one?
Oh, I'm sorry. The third one was, I'll go back to that one, the standards, professional development, and networking.
Okay.
I didn't really touch on networking because I don't necessarily do a lot of that. I don't use that function.
You answered my question. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
So the CIA certification, is that a certification of internal auditors?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, congratulations. You're getting it or working towards it?
Thank you, yeah, working towards it, yes, getting it slowly.
I'm hopeful that you'll do well, so that's good.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify what that CIA was.
Right.
Didn't know if Sheriff Kimbrough would give you something different. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And outside of that, I did have conversations with the interim superintendent, because I think the other question from the board was whether or not the Board of Education could delay their vote, because it's scheduled for this upcoming, their Tuesday, meeting. Based on my conversation with her, it seems that that is unlikely. She did, however, state that they would be open to, if we had any specific suggestions in regards to the composition, that I can send an email that states what those suggestions are. And so if this board would like me to send something, if you have any specific ideas or suggestions that you would like me to send to them for consideration.
Did you get a sense of why this was so urgent without really doing the work relative to our feedback and community?
Well, they have a public comment period, and I believe they're in their public comment period right now, or it is soon to expire, or maybe has already expired, and I think for, I don't want to speak for them, but I will say, you know, it's my understanding that they're just eager to get this committee up and running to provide some level of, I'll use the word, maybe advisory to the Board of Education, get involvement from the community, and try to work towards gaining or improving community trust.
So essentially, there's no reason to try to get consensus among us if we want to make individual comments, or you'll share all individual comments? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying I certainly can send an email kind of consensus with the board if there are suggestions of their policy, you know, the makeup, I think conversations were on Monday, if we wanted more seats and/or any of that. So I'm happy to send that on behalf of the board if there's a consensus for that.
I don't know if this group can reach a consensus on that, but, I mean, I think I shared, I'd received an email about it, and probably the issue that I would be interested in is probably having, I think we had a lot of discussion, I believe Commissioner Bessie certainly can speak for herself, but he mentioned the issue of kind of the independence of this group and his perception as being independent and not a part of the, if you're looking for someone that provides some oversight and sort of support for the board, do they need be the ones picking it in this particular environment? I think that was part of the, kind of, the issue. So I was thinking that such a group, an external audit group, could equally serve the commissioners and the board, and we could have equal appointments, so to speak, to that. And the person that sent me this email actually talked about, did we need a policymaker person, as in staff, as in superintendent, making an appointment at all? And it could be the six people plus the other staff support that are non-voting, and so if things really, I'd be surprised things would ever end up three to three, because I think we're all going to try to pick good people, but it seemed to be an equal stake would be a way to approach it. There are 100 ways to approach it, just like we talked about trying to get the IIA, and from what I hear, that is not likely, the group that would be willing to step up and do that, do the vetting. But I'm sure there are plenty of other opinions.
And I will say, you know, the superintendent in regards to the position that she would appoint, she had, she did not have strong feelings about that at all. So she recognizes she already has a non-voting member on it from staff, and so she didn't have strong feelings. She was really just modeling what had occurred in Wake County.
I would say that the problem here appears to be larger than the problem in Wake County, and for the purposes of helping to begin restoration of public trust, and even for early warnings of continuing problems or new problems, the design that we have before us is not well-suited to achieving either purpose. I would, my personal recommendation would be that they start from scratch, and that they devise a structure which provides an independent advisory oversight function, that it include appointees of the school system, the Forsyth County, and other interested institutions, and that it be charged with something more closely tracking, ongoing, independent review and advisory functions, that the goal is to boost transparency and accountability, that this be aimed in part at the public-facing function, and that while what I'm suggesting would in no way usurp the financial management duties of the superintendent and the Board of Education, that's not what the purpose of, that's not what the utility of an independent committee would serve.
So maybe at a minimum, I can still send something more formal that request a delay, that that would not hurt whether that happens or not, to provide more opportunity for feedback. Otherwise, it sounds like maybe individual members want to submit their individual public comments, or I'm not sure if you all are on the same page of what this could look like.
Well, maybe there could be two things. I mean, you could, I think that at the point of Catty Moore's bringing this up in Raleigh, they didn't have a financial crisis, I don't think, at the time that they were using it, I don't think.
She said it stemmed from, not this same kind, but they had an issue, which is how it came about.
Okay. So I was thinking maybe you could have, it's kind of a two-tiered approach, you could have, if they want to do that sort of an ongoing thing, but I think it's, maybe you could argue that at the moment, that something more visible, more public-facing, and that maybe needs to be on top of that, that's as a perception of way more independence, that could be handled differently. Maybe it's kind of a two-tiered, you know, they've already worked on their policy, they could tweak it and some other things, so for maybe an ongoing use, but perhaps it needs to be something a little broader, a little bigger for, on top of that. That could be kind of a two-pronged approach to not just say, because I understand there's, I hope that there's a sense of urgency about doing something and stepping forward and doing that, and that could, they could do that. They're working on that piece, maybe they could work on a bigger piece, too.
If they're, if it's going to be internal, like, if it's going to be controlled by the school system to the degree this proposes, then they may just as well be frank about it. It's the school system doing it. I don't know that there is any value added by having a single individual appointed by the county commission when the functions are also geared toward reviewing the audits, and that, I don't think that's, while that may be a good thing for them to have as an internal committee, internal advisory committee, one that the school system appoints from, you know, community members, that's not a strong value-added as a confidence booster in the present environment. I can't present it as such to the public, say, "Look at this new committee that's being set up. It's going to, it's going to help with the transparency and accountability within the school system," because this doesn't do that.
There consensus on delay? Sounds like, good, good deal, delay then. That'll be our feedback. Anything else needs to be said? Alrighty, good turn. Good.